Welcome down.
Thank you.
How would you feel about reading the mission and vision statement today?
I can certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay, mission statement, graduating all students to be college and career ready, challenging, inspiring, and empowering them to be healthy and productive citizens. Vision statement is, North Wasco is a premier school district. We provide students a rigorous and relevant education, schools performing academically in the top five percent of the nation. Our students are inspired by talented, innovative, and highly effective staff that values continuous professional growth. Our district graduates citizens who are ethical and motivated to achieve their limitless potential. North Wasco is fully embraced by the community reflecting its health and well-being.
Do we have students here with? Hi.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome again.
Hi Dawn, I'm Kylie, I'm the school board representative. So, everything's kind of been slow lately since it's just been finals week, so we did have spring sports finally start since the snow finally melted off. Softballs had two games and they're currently 2-0. Baseball hasn't won any of their games yet, but again, we've had a slow start, so everything's kind of getting back into the groove. Boys are the first to have the home match this season for tennis, and they're currently having that. And then, girls is away tonight, and I believe they're in the... And then, the Spring Musical Beauty and the Beast has its last four shows this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and there will be a matinee at 2:00 PM on Saturday. And then, Key Club is having a blood drive on April 30th, and I believe it's going to be in one of the gyms. State testing starts the first week of April for juniors, and they will also be doing the Healthy Team Survey sometime during that week. And then, Career Day was yesterday, and we had over thirty-five speakers and twenty colleges, military, and job opportunities for students to kind of reach out and see, and like kind of see where they want to be and what they kind of want to do. And I asked Ms. Raff, who actually coordinated the whole thing, and she was saying she wanted to like give students a insight of what there is to offer and kind of give them a way they want to go, pave the path. And then, Nathan couldn't make it tonight, but he did meet with legislators yesterday down in Salem, and he'll be here next month to give you guys a full detail, but he wanted me to tell you very well, and he made us proud. Thank you guys, have a happy spring break.
Okay, so no one signed up for comments, so we'll go straight into consent agenda. Can everyone say yes again?
We need one correction on the consent agenda under the personnel notes. Steve Sugg resigned from the football head coach position, not baseball, so I just need to make sure. Especially since he sent it to Arizona with the boys for spring break.
Okay. One second. Okay. Is this special? All in favor? Okay. You just interviewed school board candidates, and I'm saying that Tanner, you've decided to withdraw as a candidate? Okay, and you have Michael, so okay. Uh, would you mind coming up to the table? Jonathan, thank you for signing up for mine.
Thank you.
John, why don't you go ahead and fill in that on this line?
Okay.
We're going to ask you some questions if you have a chance to do it.
Okay.
So, why do you want to withdraw in this year?
Well, I've lived in the works for forty-six years, moved to the Dals from Hood River two and a half years ago, and I've seen a lot of activity with the school board, and originally, there was nobody running in Zone Seven, and it felt like it was somebody needed to step up and do it, so I did. I just think we have a very bright future both in our schools and in our community, and it's what we've got to do. So, doing my first experience at the movement office, so yeah, yeah.
What do you see as a work of the board?
Listening to public input, I think, you know, helping guide the administration and sound reasonable decisions, and giving them our advice, but supporting their decision in the long run, so I don't really know a lot. I have to learn.
Thanks for being here tonight, Michael. Talk to me about what in this fourth goal, in relationship to administrative goal, you need to do.
My guess would be, we're here to guide and advise, but to support. I don't know a whole lot about how it works, I hope to learn it. Being in the Army, head's always the head, but we're the guidance, I guess.
He said, he said policies, I was like, oh, and supervisor and supervisors around the area, and so run direct policy, and supervisor is the rest of the work, so, you know, through the policy. And the man, who knows her...
A lot to learn, yes.
How could the board ensure that the district culturally responds to the management and people?
I would think the biggest thing would just be in aware of our population and our culture itself. We have a very diverse culture in both economic and every other facet. We've got homeless kids, we've got trans youth kids, we've got kids that have great home support, kids that have no home support, still have to pay attention to this, that's going on, and make our decision based on that.
How do you feel the board can be assessed for this?
Public meetings like this, my information's already out there just for running, so I imagine they're going to contact you. I went to dinner last night, and I had six people come up to me, and I don't even know how they knew who I was. So, but I imagine you've got to really be careful because you're representing the school board, just like last night, I'm at dinner, and there's a lot of people questioning, talking to me, and I'm just like, oof. Yeah.
So, I think either member one must be mine really quick, since you're about one member on the board?
Yeah.
And so you have to be careful not to say that you represent the board, not represent yourself long enough.
Okay.
That's probably the first question you'd put.
Probably.
So, last question, what special skills and experiences do you think you create?
Well, when I do something, I'm extremely passionate about it. I'm either going to give a hundred and ten percent, or I ain't gonna, I'm not going to do it. Honesty and integrity. Hood River's a small town, the Dals is a small town, just like last night, I mean, you can't go anywhere without somebody knowing you. So, that's me. You know, I like to be able to sleep at night, and it's easier to remember the truth than it is a lie, so that's my biggest, my biggest thing, also.
John skipped a question, so I'll ask it for you. What is your vision for education in this district?
I believe full-heartedly that we need new schools, not only for the future of the students, but for the future of the Dals itself. When I work here in the Dals, and we have to not just have the best education, but the best facilities to attract people here. And I think personally, the schools are going to be the difference that either opens the Dals up or keeps it where it's at, so yeah.
So, do you see if she likes it or don't like it?
Yes, if I can give my best, if I'm chosen.
So, you have the action, if you're willing, to appoint you tonight, what's the time that you'd like to?
I read it in an email, and kind of figured if that happened, it was needed, so yeah.
So, is someone personally making a motion, or to, to, to someone, political?
I think that was my, my selection, to fill the spot, fill the election.
Okay. Just like, thank you again for stepping up. All in favor? Version thirteen, you have a slate, and we need, we need to start.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll just leave a lot together. I do sound, that I don't support.
Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Oregon, under law, there are policies that the West office and the district, during my term, have paid for the responsibilities of the department, the Department of the State of Oregon, the Department of the District.
So, what is he getting this one?
So, yeah.
Yes.
So, either here or...
Yeah. Question? So, do we need to read a ministry oath?
I don't know, but you might as well write an oath.
Okay.
The maker.
Did you get that, the maker?
John, maybe.
With the two...
The motions.
It's up to you. All in favor? Okay, just two, three, four, yeah. Okay. All right, next question, I don't know.
So, I have a presentation. The audience, the chair, the round, the seat.
I think that'll capture enough of it. Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, thank you. We're on duty.
It's a beautiful look down.
Did it? Okay. I think that'll capture enough of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Sorry. It's a beautiful look down.
Wouldn't be a presentation without a technical problem. All right. Um, I might have to, I don't know, because we, we put it on the next slide, because they won't let me log in, I don't know what it's a problem with. Is that okay? Is that okay? Because I am kind of old school, just pushing. Smart, very smart. I've never had, give me no login box, you know. My apologies.
They're distributing our fall and winter program guide, which I think the only thing left is our spring break camp and the daddy-daughter dance, maybe some community partner stuff, so just the back pages, but still. Good evening, my name is Scott Baker, I'm the executive director for the Northern Wasco County Park and Recreation District, and thank you for inviting me here tonight to share with you the progress that we've made on developing a system-wide capital facility as a park district master plan, if you will, and this will be a plan that will help guide the district over a twenty-year timeframe, although we expect to do updates at probably five and ten years as we get projects complete and we learn more through the process. So, what I would like to do is just kind of tell you a little bit about the process that we went through for the master plan, the surveying and the community outreach that we did, what we heard from that. I'll share some park plans with you that are kind of, what's on our near-term horizon, and then I'll leave time for questions, and even if you have some questions about Cerousas Park, which is not on our master plan, but if you have other questions about that or anything else with the district, I'm happy to answer those as well, so, all right, thank you. I've only been with the district a short time, and, but when I started, the board at that time said, we just completed this massive undertaking, which was build a new pool. And that has been so consuming for the board and staff over this, for such a long time, it was all that we really did. We maintained our parks as best we could, but our main focus was that pool. It's been built, we've run it for a few years, and now it's time to ask what's next. And I thought that was a great time to join a district, because asking that question of the community was a great way for me to learn about the district, and it was just an exciting time to join a district that's embarking on this new plan. And so, we went through RFP process, and we asked for help through a consultant that was going to help us both with the community outreach, but also the landscape architect portion of, and a lot of the nuts and bolts of creating a master plan from scratch. And it was from scratch, because although the district is over twenty years old, they've never had a master plan up until this point. And so, this will be the district's first, which will not only serve as a guiding document for us, but it helps in so many ways, even with grant applications, you get a few extra points if you're working off a plan, and then it allows us to do a lot of community outreach all at once. We did that primarily through written and online surveys, both in English and Spanish, in which we received about a hundred Spanish and five hundred English surveys back. But we also made efforts to go out into the community and not have people come to us, and so we did community stakeholder interviews, we did targeted outreach at the senior centers, the high schools, elementary schools, and through the workforce. So, for instance, Sunshine Mill shut down their operations for a half hour, brought their employees into a room, and we did a dot voting exercise and exercises with them. Then, some of those employees stayed, and we did it again in Spanish, and then we had some of them kind of do more targeted outreach. And then, we visited open house events, like our farmers markets, our daddy-daughter dance, which we have over four hundred people come to, the cherry festival, things like that, where we did a lot of dot voting, and so we feel like we were able to reach a pretty wide swath of the community and get some real feedback. And as varied as it was, when you distilled it down, kind of seven key items emerged through that, and so what we learned was is that there was a strong emphasis on improving the parks that we have over buying in new property and developing new parks. So, if folks had a dollar to spend, they'd spend anywhere between seventy-five and ninety-five cents on taking better care of what we already own versus building new parks. Something else that came out of that was that they'd like to see the park district partner with the school district to meet recreational needs in a more combined and directed manner. Having said the existing parks, we'd also heard that there was a strong desire to develop parks in underserved areas, specifically the west side. So, they thought we had an adequate number of parks, but the distribution was wrong, and they'd like to see those parks spread out more. Develop multi-use paths along waterways. So, this is Mill Creek Greenway, Dreams of a Chenwa Trail, and connecting these multi-use paths. This is something we've worked with the city on, and is something that we're actively pursuing now, and things, big strides have been made on that. More programming for all ages, including programming for the youngest and oldest among us. The community would like us to diversify our funding sources beyond just taxes, and work more towards cost recovery, but also just be innovative. And so, we've, I'll go through ways that we've kind of addressed that issue as well. And also, build community resiliency. Staff, the board, and the community really see a role of parks and rec as kind of bridging cultural divides within the community and bringing people who wouldn't normally recreate together, together into one place. And I think that, you know, we do that well, we've been doing that well, but it hasn't really been a focus, it's just something that sort of happened organically. You know, our adult softball is one, where we have people from all walks of life playing together on a team. They might not know each other anyway, that might be the only time, two times a week that they see each other, but it just builds that community resiliency, so we see that as a success, and so we look at place-making and programming that can build that even more. So, those were the seven things that really came out of the bulk of our community outreach, but we also didn't want to create a plan that just sat on a shelf. We wanted to invest in landscape architecture to improve those existing parks and build some new parks, and so we spent a lot of our time on getting thoughts and feedback on actual park plans, and so I'll show you those. Am I talking too fast? Okay, I'm just trying to be conscious of your time here. So, we have, I'll start here with City Park, we've got Union Street, DHS is over here, this is kind of that steep wall area, and the existing restroom is here, but this is a park redesign that maximizes its benefits both for the farmer's market, and also replaces our inaccessible playground with a larger and accessible playground, and also has some covered spaces, so it'll make it more available throughout the year, more hardscape, more mobility, some ADA parking, and this park also gets some use from DHS when they do supervised home visits, so it's not really shown in here, but in our narrative, we look at making spaces where we can have people feel like they are having kind of one-on-one time, but they're still able to be supervised, and so get more use for that area, so. What's not immediately apparent from this is also what came out of it, is a desire to kind of pull in some of the design elements from Lewis and Clark Park, which is right down Union, and so rock facade, sit wall, some of the same colors, some of the same materials, and starting to build towards a more cohesive park system, you know? Not that all parks are going to be cookie cutter and look the same, but that there'll be common elements, whether it's signage and park site furnishings and things that start to look kind of the same throughout the district, so. So, I'll take questions throughout, so we can, if you have any questions on City Park, just shout out, all right? And then, sorry.
In that, that lawn piece of the science for...
Yeah, so this is, to get some skill, this is a twenty by nearly one hundred covered market area, including, and I should mention, it has more stub outs, we want to bring more food to market. It's also designed so that vendors can drive through more easily, drop off their things. There'll still be vendors scattered throughout, but wider sidewalks, so people can get past each other, so mobility is enhanced. Go ahead.
I have a quick question. I was here for the farmer's market, so have you been talking to them, as far as how the flow would go with them?
Absolutely, so they've been involved in every step of the way, as far as the design elements, and yeah, and they love it. They, when we finally unveiled it, they're like, you made us a home, and it was just really nice. So, we have a lot of mature trees over here, we're pretty much going to leave that alone, it's sort of a nice shady area, so.
So, when you were talking to the community, you were investigating our communication between the community viewpoint on what to do with the parks, the size of the area. Did you give them some external context?
Yes, absolutely, we did. So, we used a community planning workshop through Oregon State, and they were contracted through our master planning consultants, which is Cameron McCarthy. Colin MacArthur is our lead, he grew up in Sherman County, he went to the Dallas High School, it seemed like a natural fit to have him, joined Cameron McCarthy, is that name of the outfit. But there's several firms that do this, you know, and it's, it can be a really hard thing to get right, you know, and so it's nice to have a little expert help on that, and I think it was money-wise, right?
But I think that this really did help.
Yeah, I think so.
Kind of a fair result.
Yeah, yeah, and so, that facilitated process.
Remember, you were seven, but is that still, is that the stadium?
Yeah, and so, it's kind of, this drawing isn't really great, the current one is up here, you know, there's looking at to be some more stadium seating over here, so it would likely be turned, and, you know, and so there's a little Van Shelley kind of stage, but it also will just serve as a cover picnic area when it's not being used, and that's another thing that we heard, is that small or medium-sized rentable shelters, people want to be able to know that they can reserve a place for a birthday party for their six-year-old, and have everybody come there, and it's not going to be taken over by somebody else. And then also, larger areas for groups of our community that like to get together in bigger groups around food, you know, more family reunions and stuff, so it's kind of super cool. I want to get through them all, but I also don't want to skip out. So, I'm going to show this one upside down, because it's how my brain works, because this is Cully Viewpoint up here, and this is Fourteenth Street and Union, and so this is the old city reservoir, right? And so, it's right now, if you drive by up Union, you come to kind of a wall of some brush and fence, right? So, this property is already completely fenced, and it's large, and it has some established trees, and we see this as a possible future home for a dog park. And dog parks are really for people, they're a way for people to get together and socialize with their dogs and with each other, and there's definitely been a strong community need, this is something we heard over and over again for a large dog park. These lines, which are kind of hard to see, we see segmenting this larger area into sort of pie slices, and we can open one when the grass starts to get hammered, we close it, open up another one, and rotate them through and give grass a chance to recover, and that's why it's segmented that way. This shows kind of a conceptual trail up to Cerousas Park, there's also one up here on Washington, so this might be a lower priority, and there's a note here that says, limited recreational value on this steep, steep land, and we consider disposition to other uses, and this is a recognition that the park district is part of a larger local government community. Maybe there's a higher purpose for this with affordable housing, or just housing, you know, and so maybe this, the disposition of this land can be rethought, because there's not a lot of recreational value here. Maybe we can trade this for some land on the west side where we have a need for parks, and so it's just kind of being creative and trying to figure out a way that we can be a good partner for the other agencies. Questions or not? I got five, so, yeah, that's a good one. So, here we have Thompson Park, also known as the Pool and Skate Park, we have about six acres of undeveloped land here. We have, going through the Riparian area, a segment of the Mill Creek Greenway, right now, we're lucky enough to get some monies from Urban Renewal to get construction drawings and engineering work on this piece done, and that will be done in the spring, and they're out there surveying today. We have sort of an amphitheater area and sport courts and a drive-in movie theater-style screen. We have up on here, a putt-putt golf course, and one of the things we heard is that the when the recreation building went away, it left this big little hole. We don't see ourselves getting into the bowling alley business, but we thought that maybe, you know, we already have a concession stand here that's only used a few months out of the year, if we built a kind of mini golf course, we could open that up on Friday and Saturday nights, employ a couple of high schoolers, hand out some putters, and just kind of make another place where families and teens and tweens can get together and have a more positive place to be. If we built a kind of mini golf course, we could open that up on Friday and Saturday nights, employ a couple of high schoolers, hand out some putters, and just kind of make another place where families and teens and tweens can get together and have a more positive place to be on those weekends. Expanding the skate park, bike skills course, increased parking, increased restrooms, rentable shelters. And it shows a new playground. That playground's fine, but this is a 20-year plan, right? So we know it's going to need to be eventually, we've got people like, why are you replacing playgrounds already? But it's a 20-year plan, you know, it's, we have to plan for the future and set aside money for that. So there's a lot going on here. This is definitely a project that we see doing in phases, and it lends itself well to that. Questions on this one?
Crash on the track.
It's a mountain bike skill development course. So kind of a family, low elements, low skill building courses. And then this is like an asphalt pump track and increased skate park area. So this, we get across second, and actually Monday at the Urban Renewal, they directed staff to work on a grant application to connect Lewis and Park to this area. So now we have the city doing that, that part. Park District's working on this part. And then from here, you get across six. We own property behind, what was Oil Can Henry's, the Valvoline there? So then you get behind Oil Can Henry's, a bridge lands, takes you behind Cascade Square all the way to Kramer. So Cascade, that road, eighth behind Cascade Square is really wide. We could have a off-street bike there and still have a full-size street. So it all kind of works together to try and get towards Kramer and then just go beyond. This is a conceptual plan for a development of Riverfront Park. It includes a dedicated swim beach, a dock that gets you in and out of the water without touching the bottom. So that's the least favorite part about swimming there, right, is the bottom. But we think that if we can do a dock where you can just dive in and climb out, it'd be great. We got a swim platform that's going to be really aspirational, something that's more for strong swimmers. We've got expanded playgrounds. And this is not to scale, but it's to show for audiences like this or far away, but a, an RV park, overnight camping, including overnight bike camping. We believe that when the trail comes through, we'll have bike tourists come and want to stay here, so we want to give them a place to land. Additionally, in this area, we are going to build a fire camp. This would be a flat grassy area that if there was ever another fire in the gorge, that the crews could come, set up their shower, and meal tents and stay there rather than staying on your property and disrupting what you're doing. I know it might be an income generator, but we want to give them another alternate place to be that's close to the freeway that keeps them from coming back after 24 hours of fighting and driving through a neighborhood.
Especially also during school, the school year, the part they're starting.
Yeah, especially now, every year's changing.
And just to let you know, it's a break-even sort of situation.
Yeah, yeah.
It's government-to-government, so.
Yeah, I know. It's really just about public service. We have the property that's ideally suited. We were in, you know, FEMA-type meetings with them, and they're really looking for a place. And it's like, well, you know, the park district, we don't have a lot of money, but we do have a lot of land. Let's see how we can help each other out.
So there's like a, you know, like tent camping, uh, tents for the...
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, maybe some quieter bike camping over in this area. Additionally, this allows us to really have camp hosts. So two things. One, we do see the RV park is, and overnight camping is an income generator. So a non-tax income stream for us, it allows us to do more things. But also that camp, those camp hosts do provide 24-hour security, reduce our maintenance. And that's something that we're looking to bring into other parks, including like Cirrhosis, where we have the space and can have a spot for a fifth wheeled park, get somebody in there that can open and close our restrooms, kind of keep an eye on things, and help reduce our maintenance costs.
So, and what's the part that I was just beginning to ask, like, are they...
Very optimistic. I think that we're getting there, yeah, so.
What's going to happen about that? Because the nesting birds and things like that, I mean, how much habitat is...
Well, so this whole section down here, although it shows some more trails, remains a wild and habitat area. And so, you know, I think that part of the things we've talked about is dedicating a portion of the revenues towards habitat restoration. So if we can increase the biological diversity here, it makes a stronger case for opening up the developed part of the park year-round. And, yeah, and it's, you know, these permit restrictions, although a lot of people think that for geese, is really for bald eagles. And so, you know, there's, we kind of want to get a handle on what is our baseline? What do we need to do to enhance that habitat, to make the other areas open year-round? Now, you can see it from the freeway. We think we would be full quite often. Well, if you plant grass and then by a river, you get geese, but, you know.
More questions about the, like, access, like, kayak, or, you know, July will close, unfortunately, but, you know, I live a kayak too, so we're always looking for places to put in that's in and out of our boats.
Sure, so that's here, it says paddle craft launch. So that's a non-motorized boat launch, essentially. And...
Is that going to include, like, markings? Because I was out there some time, and actually, incidentally, a young man was operating ski boats and other things, so there's a lot clearly defined area, so not just offshore...
Yeah, but offshore, yeah.
...the smoking area, that's probably different turn of people's, you know, along that.
There's a lot of work that needs to be done here, you know, as far as making this safe, but I think that we'll get there. And that's, this, I mean, we would love to open this tomorrow. We understand that even just with the permitting, this is a multi-year project. But we want to, it's a slow movement. We want to get that going. We want to get started. And just understand that this is, as much as we'd love the income, this won't be the first thing that we do. So we'll just take some... I got one more. How am I doing on time? Sorry, Brett. Okay, so this is, was created in kind of response to answer the question, what kind of sports field complex could we have if we used all the land that the county owns? So this includes areas that right now is the community wood program and shops and other things. All of those things don't need to be here. They can be, we can relocate the wood program to our 14th Street property. We can relocate some of the sheds and other things. And so, you know, it's just kind of a fun exercise to do. It gets the juices flowing. We desperately need more fields and ball field complex would be a great thing for the community here. Whether it's at this location or another, this allows us to at least have that conversation. And so what you get is four full-size soccer fields, baseball fields, Little League, big grass, open space, and it's, yeah, parking, playground. We understand we don't own this land, belongs to the county. Don't really weigh in on whether its highest and best use is field, but if it's going to be fields, this is what would fit here.
And kind of the stuff that is, you know, the, 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 the,[1174.12]
Oh yeah, let's do it, let's hear it. Yeah, it does open up different recreational possibilities. It's hard besides the field space to just throw a frisbee around. Yeah, well, it's shocking. I mean, right now, it's, you know, that phrase like break eggs and make an omelet. And it's like, whoa, it's a lot, it represents a lot of work. And so, just our board's directed staff, we're essentially for this next six months, we're throwing everything we have at cirrhosis. Even to the, putting other projects that we'd hoped to do to another fiscal year to dedicate all of our remaining funds to cleaning up and getting cirrhosis looking good again. It's a good place to be. Yeah, it's, you know, we, staff has talked about it, you know, we, we have a goal of a, of a park within a quarter mile or a short walk of everybody. And for a little district like us, that's really out of reach without looking at school properties serving park functions, you know, and it's a shift. But as we, as you go on your own facilities plan, we can work together to say, oh, how can we build the next school so that it works as serves park functions? It's in our master plan, you'll find it in there, and that will allow us to do a couple of things, it'll provide us to help with system development charges and other things that the park districts can provide to, to make that those things that might cost a little bit more upfront able to be built for the community. So, it's in there, but, alright, thanks.
Is everyone ready?
Yes, let's try this again. Alright, so Scott, thank you so much for switching with me, and then for other folks for coming to my IT rescue. It's mostly pictures, so I apologize if it's a little bit long. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Brett from the Blue Zones Project. We have a staff of four here. You'll see photos and actually video of the whole team, but I'm the, who's coming here tonight to talk with you guys because I do most of the work in the schools. So my plan tonight was just to give you kind of an overview of the Blue Zones, our progress to date, which we've really been on the ground about a year and a half as a team. And then formally ask the school board just to support the Blue Zones Project work going forward, particularly around having all of the schools complete the Blue Zones School Pledge, which I'll talk a little bit more about. Okay, so, and before I really get started, I want to thank our sponsors. So Canvia Health Foundation is our main statewide sponsor for the Blue Zones Project. Communities across the state of Oregon, and then locally MCMC is our main sponsor. But then there are also other sponsors as well. So without their support, we wouldn't be here. Okay, so I have this really cool video that was created actually by immense imagery, so Rob. Thank you. This is one of the first big views of it publicly. Okay, it's about three minutes.
Blue Zones Project has been working with community partners to make living naturally easier in the Dallas. Promoting more places to walk and bike.
Creating more spaces to gap.
And there are opportunities to connect with people at both times of the year. Blue Zones Project focuses on three different levels. The people who live in our community.
The places where they spend their time.
And policy to support long-term life and safety. When people pledge to make healthier choices, Blue Zones Project works to make sure that making those choices is easily accessible for everyone in the Dallas.
Let's look at what the Dallas accomplished in 2018.
Proud of living in Dallas because the people here are very welcoming and hope to learn about the Blue Zones Project especially and how to use better and live longer. They would have done their purpose too. So living their lives on purpose would have given them a focus and direction in their life to ensure that they had no regrets at the end of their life. They wanted to be helping and they wanted time to do what's important. So if that's traveling with family and kind of enjoying other cultures, they wanted the time for that and the means to do that. But they did just want to be welcomed and safe and healthy.
My name's Bruce Lumper, and I've been working on hitting us a trail on Hill Creek for about ten plus years now with a lot of the folks in the community. And we're at the point of about two years out, we're like, we're gonna begin construction, at least on this segment here through Thompson Heart, and hopefully get us connected to Red Hunt Trail down Union Street as well. It's a pretty healthy stream going through our community, and we want folks to get, we get down there, enjoy the peace and quiet, see the fish, rest a little bit, get out of your busy stream of life, and then, and go back and do it.
I'm proud of you for the Dallas, because we had a new life in downtown California.
I'm really proud to live in the Dallas. One of the reasons is because of the people who live here, the citizens. People who live and work here are very grateful about making this a better place.
I'm proud to be in the Dallas, just how well we work together in the downtown community.
Oh, for yourself to stand in the Dallas, we're honored to be in the Dallas.
What you think about, what it is you want to get back, is it wrong? No, we feel it's good back.
So I'm sure everybody saw, not only the smaller places, but probably spaces in there. Okay, so that was just the kind of recap. I mean, then, so I just gonna have a few more slides about Blue Zones progress with programs, different programs not related to schools, but then I want to hone in on the school stuff in the couple minutes I have here. So in the video, they said that the three sort of main pillars, I guess, of the Blue Zones Project are people, places, and policy. So I'm just gonna talk about the people and the places piece, a lot of piece. So the people, as was briefly touched on in the video, so one of the main metrics as a project, we look at if we're successful, is how many people complete a Blue Zones activity. And we're in like the sixteen to seventeen hundred number, and so what those, what those activities are can be volunteering. You saw some examples, the cleanups have actually been really popular in the Dallas. We have one coming up this weekend, a meeting at Chana with Middle School, if anyone's interested in that. And we've been doing purpose workshops, which is a two-hour instructor-led program, which we actually had them last night at the senior center and had thirteen people come out, which is a pretty good turnout, especially on a really nice night. And then there's a variety of other activities of people who are volunteering to do that walking school bus, where you saw those kids carrying the buses. So at all the elementary schools, we have walking groups that walk into the school every day. And then a lot of other different, just activities that people get involved with. But we're really proud that we have ten percent, so roughly ten percent of the local population has participated, and we're hoping to, you know, keep grabbing that up. So the places piece, and this is really the core of the work that I do, so I work with the different places in the, in the Blue Zones language. The places that we work with are restaurants, grocery stores, work sites, and schools. So so far, these are the work sites that have become Blue Zones approved. So that, the way it works is that with these different types of places, there's a program that a work site such as MCMC would go through, and it can take some of them, really the whole eighteen months that we've been on the ground, to work on a wellness and health plan for their employees to get enough points to become a Blue Zones approved organization. And it's a pretty high bar. I mean, as you can see, there's only, there's about five that have actually gained the approval, and then there's probably twelve or so in the background that are still working on it. And some of them won't get there because it is a pretty high bar that's set. So Restaurants also has a similar type of program, but it's, it's best practices around how a restaurant owner can kind of rethink what they're doing to offer healthier stuff. So these are currently the four that we have approved. There's a couple more that are gonna be approved in the next month or two. These are the four that we currently have. And then Grocery Stores, actually Groshell is not yet approved, but I'm really hoping that it will happen soon. So I don't know if anyone shops there, but when you go in, there's like a Blue Zone checkout lane with some fruit and veggies. We've been doing a lot of collaboration with Oregon State Extension on doing cooking demos, and then store, healthy store tours and different stuff like that. So I'm hoping that they and then also Love Ishuakana, which is very popular with the high school students on their lunch break, could eventually become a Blue Zones. But they're not actually approved, I should have put an asterisk on it, but I hope soon that it will be. Okay, so now the other places, and really the reason that I'm here is to talk about schools. So we have a very long and detailed school pledge packet that, the goal is that all of the schools in District Twenty-One could at least work on it and then hopefully become approved. And I'm very excited to say that after fifteen months of pretty intense effort, I finally got to submit my first school for approval, and it was Chanoit. So two days ago, so the way it works is that, and I wasn't even expecting them to be here, but some of the Chanoit All-Stars that I worked with, a lot on this are here. So I submit this validation packet off to the main Blue Zone headquarters back east, and a non-biased person goes through it and really tries to check that what we're saying that they have reached this level of performance is in fact accurate. So we haven't heard back, but I, we had some padding in there, we went over the minimum threshold, so I think that they're gonna get it. So hopefully by the end, like a week from now, they'll be the first approved school. And just as a couple highlights of the types of things, a lot of stuff was actually already happening, and it was more just validating things that they were already doing, or maybe tightening up, you know, some, some loose ends around things. But a few exciting new things that we worked on, one was the smoothie cart, which you saw kind of in the, in the montage video of a kid with a smoothie mustache. So that was something that where there's this healthy cart that's actually an old AV cart that has been painted and looks really cool. And it has all the things that a teacher could use to make healthy smoothies for various celebrations in the classroom. And that's really like a centerpiece of this new healthy celebrations policy that Chanoit is piloting and will hopefully be rolling into permanent, permanently part of their kind of classroom policies. But it's basically saying that taking all of the food-related celebrations that a school, that a teacher could do or a classroom could have in a month, and to put it all into one day during one set time. So not only saving time, I mean, you know, getting to spend more time on actually teaching, but then also really honing in on a list of things that are kind of the acceptable, healthier ways to do a celebration. So that was, Oregon State Extension helped us a lot with that, because that's common in other parts of Oregon, and they kind of helped lead the way with that. And then just another fun thing that we did, and there's, of course, it's not just these three things. These are just the three that I kind of pulled out that are easier to talk about and I have photos for. But we did a Bike Night last June, where I think we had about, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty people came out to Chanoit, and a lot of local bike shops came. And the idea, the shortest description of it was let's get kids who don't have bikes to have bikes, or kids with broken bikes or flat tires, get their bikes going right before the end of school. And we didn't know how it would really go, but people really came out from Duffer, from everywhere, like people really came out. So we're gonna do it again, June sixth, I think is the date that we could do it, again, the last Thursday. So that's exciting, and you'll hear, you know, more from us about when that's coming up. So yeah, really my next, and I did wanna, if there's time for questions, answer any ones from you guys. But what I had hoped to do here was just fill you in on where we are, and, and kind of ask for your approval to work with the food vendor Sedexo around some of these other food-related things that we would like to try to roll out across the district. And it, I actually had, now, in the last couple of days, I've been getting a lot of email from the main Sedexo food rep, who, you know, so we're gonna meet in like a week or so. So I think actually that is kind of already, that ball's already rolling. So then I guess just to you guys in, in your decision-making body here, I wanted to just ask for kind of official approval to continue the work and to really just, you know, it's a high goal, but to try to get all the schools in the district to become Blue Zones approved, or at least to have them, you know, make a good go at it. Yes, I'd love to answer any questions or...
Well, just like when I was complaining about how you're working with Blue Zones, and what he's, what this group is, are people who they talk to in this regard? I don't know, you're already working.
Well, I think, I think it's really important for the, the board to, to listen to and get any questions answered that they may have about it. Like as you stated, we recently had our Sedexo annual meeting, and one of the things was to get that working together because we really, you know, we're needing to restart the Wellness Committee. So that's a really important piece, and, and I think as a, as a district, be supportive of it. As the individual schools, then, then that, that work has to go back down to the, the school level and administrators that are, that are here in terms of how much and how they can take that on. And we've got at least one school that can clue them in on, on, on what that takes and that type of thing. And I know Bethany, you've been involved with, you might speak a little bit from a school perspective to the board.
First, I would say this has been one of the most meaningful things I think I've participated in in my life. This being the students as well as teachers and candidates, and like impact that having been done in Chanoit has impacted them tremendously. Wonderful to be involved with just that mind shift with students. I've been there today observing another snack that it was just second nature to make sure it was healthy. And they came in there and they, they knew what it was all about. I'm a huge advocate and supporter of working with Sedexo from a parent perspective, as well as an educator perspective. I think that there are over to it. I know I talked about a lot, new work with Sedexo and I worked with Sedexo before. I think that anything we can do in terms of the board and, but mostly, you know, parents, we think of educators. We need that, and we support culture cases. I know we're USDA, but I think USDA is a different standard, and it won't be really ideal for our students in the Dallas. And I think at the hospital, educators at about ten o'clock, we see this huge hit underground in our students because they have sugar overload, they're probably low. We need to, we need to do what's necessary to get that back, and we need to, 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 to.
So again, then going back to, to the board, my recommendation would be that the board give the nod to at least for us as staff to go back and, and, and talk and consider what would, what would it take? And so again, we have at least one school that's, that's pretty much there.
I think.
They can let us know what it's going to take, and then administration needs to determine whether that's feasible or what it would take for us to do that within, within the school. So we certainly want to talk with labor management, we have contractual kinds of pieces that we want to take a look at. If we're going to ask people to be involved, we want to make sure that everyone's on board.
Yeah, it's definitely much, a lot. Yeah, I think it, so far, it's, it has been that I've met with, it has, I don't know if it's been the official Wellness Committee, but it's been a group of teachers that has, you know, said that they want to work on this with me. And then they go through, like, imagine just a big menu, and then they kind of hone in on the things that are important. I guess more my interest when I was like, I want to come here to talk to you guys, is that I know a lot about the food. Planning happens at more of a district level, and I knew that the Sedexo contract was being renegotiated at least a couple of months ago. So that was, so the food piece, I think, would possibly be planned more district level. But on the school level, building level, there's complete control over, you know, what they, what these, like, these guys decided to really push for at Chanoit.
Yeah, I don't know if you, you know, do any comments on those processes, Brett?
Yeah, so we got the emails at the beginning of last school year, and so, I got them, and I was like, okay, we need to do this. So we sent out an email, and I just asked who would be interested, and we had some really awesome teachers who were very interested, and we kind of just went from there. So the first step was just looking at the checklist, which is a really lovely packet, it tells you sort of the requirements, and most of the things our schools are already doing. But there were some areas that kind of push you, so like having an annual family thing. The Bike Night was huge for us.
Yeah, that was great. And there were so many bikes that were given away to kids, and, um, I don't know. Were you thinking about one?
Yeah, a couple dozen, yeah.
Yeah, that were just given out, and then just seeing the kids ride them, be excited, and seeing them here, and there's it. And so then pulling them in, and I know Blue Zones becomes like a little night, and it litters, you know, and the family in that way. And every time that we met as a little Blue Zones committee to go through the checklist, to go through the next steps, you know, it's, there's nine of us. Anybody who wants to be a part of it, will be part of it. And then we just take it back, oh, we're looking at doing this, and we're looking at doing that, and we're like, oh, you know, okay. And so, then when it all came to fruition, we're like, this, this is what we're looking at doing now. We kind of, we duped out what we thought was the most important for our school and what we thought was attainable. And then amongst ourselves, and then we brought it to Brett, and then we finalized what we were gonna do. And I think the biggest ones were the policies, which we got to learn from.
Well, I think global people, it was a big thing to know. I mean, there was definitely some many classes. So things such as, you know, the children that can walk around with their Starbucks cups in there, you know, big, whatever you call them. Anyways, there were certain things that was, but that's gonna be a really difficult thing to give up. So, you know, we're not making any improvements there. So one of the biggest policies, I mean, we wrote three different policies, and they're all centered around celebrations. And so in schools, we were seeing, you know, every other day cupcakes being brought in and interruptions into the educational curriculum. So I think the biggest shift for children, but it was really led by the parents and, and the staff was to move slowly to a once-a-month celebration. And so the third Wednesday of every month, we put all the birthdays and, and all the holidays get celebrated in a healthy manner. And so, um...
And it was nice that we have the parents a chance to participate. So if you have a kid whose birthday is in October, you can volunteer to be part of the Healthy Committee Celebration for October, and bring something in if you'd like to do that. And so then it's less work on the teachers, more running the celebration. And then the parents are, are building that community piece and coming in and helping do that. And, and then we don't have to pay for, yeah.
Just disruption.
Yes, and we have more instructional time.
It's planned, yeah, yes.
And the policies are in the group, it's like, you know, that.
Yes.
So Chanoit, because I know if you came and we, uh, did you share that or not?
And they are ready to.
Still a bit of a question.
Yeah.
That's great.
But then there was other things that we just wasn't, it was, I'm trying to think of ones that, like water fountains. So one of the big ones that just weren't at work at Chanoit that we probably do work at some of the other schools, was we don't have the ability to make water fountain stations. So we don't have the newer water fountain that we could do water bottle stations. That was a way that we looked into buying a ramp, and then some drywall just had to add for that. And so those were things we could have seen, that we just, it wasn't, we worked on building structure and structure. So we didn't do this in our area.
And then there were easy ones we could get, where they were like, don't have a coffee machine for the kids, and we're like, done. So that was nice. And then it was like the gardening piece, because we had teachers who were already involved in that. And so then bringing them in to just tweak it a little bit to meet the Blue Zones requirement of kind of the gardening aspect. So it wasn't, I mean, it's, it's a long process, but it's not earth-shattering. It's unspeakable.
When, I, I, what was really interesting, we kind of compared for, I, not for respect, but for concern, and it just, I think we compared them by meeting them up with it, and the staff that are in front, they didn't really just make, you know, kind of stock, offer, just like a full engagement.
Starting next school year.
Yeah.
So again, going back to what, what you've asked, as far as the district level, that's, that's moving along. I mean, we, Sedexo's contacted you, they're very interested, and, and it's an absolute win-win that way. The building levels, it's, it really does have to go back to the, to the administration, and, and in terms of, and staff at each building, because there, there has to be buy-in, you know, parents have to come on board. And secondary, you know, as those folks that are secondary are listening to this, you know, how might that fit? What might that look like? So those are, those are things that, yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, is that okay?
We don't, we don't have any, we don't have anything that we have approved to, to. It's not an action. Just, just, we're, we're supportive. Listen, you're, you're supportive, we, we are working on it as a district level, and, yeah, go forward, see what you can do.
I mean, there's, there's things that you can help with, and tools that, being a part of the engagement and the sponsorship, I mean, you.
Yeah, I, I feel like the timing, I would have ideally have already met with Sedexo and had the deep discussions before this, but like maybe in a month or two, come back and say, okay, here's the kind of places where, you know, we've discussed, and like this is, this is either the new decisions that need to be made, or new support that we need to see to implement something new. So that's at least in my mind, how it's viewed. Yeah, yeah. Alright, thank you.
You can tell on the video. Um, school facility use process, Mr. Carter?
Well, thank you. I, I don't have any fancy poster boards, or I don't have any display. I just have myself, so it'll have to do. And it's, it'll be brief. A few months back, the board kind of tasked us to kind of come up with a, I guess, a process, a user-friendly process for the community as well as internal users to reserve our spaces, as well as different, other questions that came up, the policies we have, and how we say yes, how we say no. It's, and it was a pretty extensive process. We had a, so pretty much, what we've done, we, we've tried to basically streamline the process and make it easier for the community to see what our uses are, what's available. So, so we've done a few things since we were asked that. So kind of where we're at now, and that's kind, this is just more of an update of where we're at. The existing process, which we still use to a point, sometimes creates delays, it's cumbersome. It's not very user-friendly sometimes. Sometimes they have to fill out a paper form, drop it off, fax it in, and they don't know if it's actually available, then it gets rejected, goes back. So it, there is that process. That's the way it's been going for quite a while. So basically, I, I reached out to like eight different school districts somewhat in our area, there's not like eight real. So, uh, basically, I, I reached out to like eight different school districts somewhat in our area. There's not like eight real close to us, but eight within Oregon, trying to get as close as possible. I tried to figure out what they were doing, you know, what was working, what wasn't working. And one of them was actually Forest Grove, uh, one of our partners was, was Sedexo as well. They'd been using FS Direct for about five years. And we use SchoolDude for our maintenance, work order system. It tracks our preventive maintenance work orders. It's how people submit work orders and it also tracks all of our deferred maintenance. And they have a module which you can attach to it, part of SchoolDude is called FS Direct, and it's a scheduling software, facility schedule. And Forest Grove has actually been using it for about five years. And when talking to them, it's pretty much solved, I won't say all of their issues, uh, because they had pretty much the same type of issues we had and solved most of those issues. So, uh, so where we're at, we, no, no, we reached out and we got that module and we have the module installed into our system. And for the last three months, we've been pretty much putting in a lot of data entry, a lot of data entry. Uh, we, we've defined the user roles, we've defined the locations, and we are almost ready to start doing some internal, internal user training, which is going to be the faculty, the staff, and basically internal district users first. And it allows us to do some beta testing. We'll start with the high school and the athletic facilities, since those are the highest of demand. And we'll see how it works internally and if there's any hiccups, we can work those out. And then hopefully a month after that, we will roll it out to all the schools, once all the data is put in. And then we're hopefully by the summer, if everything goes good and the, and the testing doesn't show any huge, um, hiccups or things that we missed, we're hopefully going to get this out to the community in the summer as well. It, that's just one part of three things that we have to do to make this work. One is, uh, we, we do need to have a solid premise use policy. Um, ours is, is, is age, I think it was two thousand nine was the last one, and it, it doesn't really address most of the concern. So we do have a draft policy, it's all a draft form right now, already done. Uh, we already have a draft fee schedule based, you know, with, you know, with our community in mind, which addresses a lot of the different user groups that we have, um, different stages, if you will, categories, nonprofit, for-profit, uh, parks and rec, et cetera. But I think we've addressed all those and it's all in draft. Um, so we're almost there. We're getting close. Uh, my goal is to roll this out to the internal part of the high school. Good thing, oh Kurt is here. Oh Kurt, this is news to you, by the way. Um, yeah, so, um, we're going to hopefully get this rolled out by the end of April to the high school. I just have to set up the training for the staff. It'll be the admin staff first, including Mr. Evans over there. He's all excited, you can tell. Um, I, I, I think it'll work good. I think this is what we're looking for, I, I hope. Um, the way it works is the schools will be able to plug in all their use. I have a play, et cetera, et cetera, ball games, practices, and it'll be in the calendar and then a community user will go in and they will see the calendar as well and they'll, you know, it'll all be electronic, they'll, they'll see it and they'll say, oh, it's, it's not available. It might not say what it's for, because we don't want to give a lot of info, like there's a kindergarten play or not, it's just not available. All the academic days won't be available, but then they can choose to apply for something that's, is available. So there's a lot better chance that it won't get rejected. So there's a lot of training on our, our end to make sure that we as a district put in the info first. Um, it, it won't be open, uh, for the community to, to use until we have to come up with that day. Um, probably sometime in August to give the schools a chance to put their academic calendar in first. The rest would be sort of stacked on hold. And if two, three users want to use it, they all go to order, so to speak, you know. Um, this way it's not, oh, I ask first, you ask first. It attracts all that. Takes a lot of the, um, parts for, uh, where we used to sort of get in trouble was, was trying to do, um, basically decide, uh, between, uh, between two groups in the past, which one's more important, which, and now it's really, it's, it's all based on the categories, nonprofit, in district, out of district, and really who, who asked first. It's all tracked, you know, I can't say, well, he asked first and so. I think it'll work, um, and, and we're excited about it. It is a long process and I, I'm not going to take all the credit. Claire, my secretary, is doing just as much work as I am on this thing. Uh, we have weekly trainings on it, um, and tomorrow we have the last one for us before we start to set up the, uh, uh, the internal training. Um, so basically, once we get this rolling, we want to make sure that, um, internally that it works. And we're moving slow for a reason, because at first we were trying to get this rolling fast. We started fast, but I want to make sure that, I'd rather go slow and make sure that it's right, all the data's right, before we push something out that doesn't work quite right. It'd be, oh, you guys failed or something, it doesn't work. So we just want to make sure we work out as many bugs as possible before we roll it out. There's always going to be some bugs, but if we can minimize them, it's going to help, help out. Yes.
What kind of oversight mechanism are we checking with service equity there?
Equity as in?
Well, just as far as groups have to ask, you know, there are some whole groups that can be able to ask right away and so I just kind of keep on thinking about that.
What?
You know, there have been that opportunity, but then I would like to prioritize.
Well, the prioritization really has to go based on category. And again, uh, you, it's hard, you know, there's always an option to go case by case, of course, but, but that also leads to, are you being fair judgment-wise? That, that, so, so we're trying to take out some of that to where, you know, we're looking like we're, you know, being fair to this person but not unfair to this person. So it, it is try to, with, with equity. And it isn't just electronic, you know, they could still do paper form, it'll be on a web, there'll be a lot of avenues, so it, it won't be a while, well, I don't have a computer and I couldn't do it. So there is still avenues to do it for everybody. And for the equity part, it really is based on who the group is. If it's an in-district, you know, it's going to get priority over for, a group from who's, who's out of district, so to speak. Um, a nonprofit group such as a parks and rec or a youth, um, league, you know, it's got to give preference over a for-profit league.
You would be a huge ask, but I would love to see, you just not be able to select a location as much as select what they need. Because I think of course, everybody wants the middle school gyms, but do we give locations like volleyball? There's certain gyms, like volleyball, they need to, and where most gyms have regulation, basketball. And so is there any way in the system where union groups can say, you need a regulation basketball court versus a re-lod, a middle school?
I can do a, I can do a general, um, basically it would be a new location, general purpose gym. And then we would have to decide which one.
And I know that, that makes it really messy because then somebody's having to replace people, but I think, I think where I hear so much this frontal is more not that they don't have the gym, that they don't have the right gym that would work, that these people could use over here. And sometimes I think they can really consult around, but I mean, not even the sports, but I think things like music, you know, what, what room has a P A system at a stage? Well, we can, at Chinama versus Colonel Riley. Um, so it'd be interesting to see if that would be an option, uh, select your offices or what you need. And we'll, we'll see if we have.
We can, because I have one general and it's a, it's a general purpose classroom, because we do have people who request classrooms. But I, it's, it would be very cumbersome for me to list every classroom in the district, um, and its size and its location and, and they'll, and create a schedule for it. So I have a general purpose classroom for each building. Uh, so if they want a classroom here, they would ask for it. And then it goes to, you know, Sandra or the office, but, well, this is the classroom that I'm going to put them in because it fits. And there is a sort of item, you know, request, you know, which they can say, well, I want the building, but I would like a P A, like a basketball desk or whatever it is, so that plays in part of it. So we can do a general purpose gym, we can. Uh, and I do understand that everybody does want the middle school gym in summer, because it's a lot cooler, of course, than any other gym. And we only have, what is it, um, three real gyms with wood floors. Other, most are, you know, it's, it's sort of a court floor or something. So for basketball, we only really have C E S is one. Um, Kurt's and here is the only basketball gyms we have. But yeah, if we have somebody who's doing pickleball here and we don't have any basketball space, we should be able to swap basketball here and have pickleball over at Colonel Riley.
You know, you said in the talk.
Oh, oh, well then, uh, that too, we're talking to. So we have four, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question about.
Yes, yes.
I know what it comes to, that the, um, if you should try to align it against other parks and rec.
Yes, it, that's a consider, because we have to be, um, obviously, um, I, I guess the term is, understand that they are a tax-based entity as well. And, uh, we, we don't want to compete with them because they have space available too. And we don't want to take everybody in and not let parks have anybody, because we don't have the space or we're overusing our space or, or vice versa. I would, you know, so, and, and it is pretty much aligned with, and it is in draft form and it is based a lot historically what we've already done. So it's not a shock factor, you know, oh, it was, it was fi, it was, it was five dollars a, a kid, now it's twenty. No, it's pretty much the same, but based on reasonable rate. And we like to use the term cost, cost recovery. It's, you know, and it's almost impossible to get cost recovery for these, you know, we're not in a, you know, profit business. Yes, you have to make it feasible, um, to where it's not a huge burden to the district, because we don't want to, you know, lose a lot of revenue or, or resources trying to support, you know, private groups. That's understandable. But full cost recovery is almost impossible when you get to like turf-like fields. I, I can't charge a soccer league ten thousand dollars, because that's kind of what it costs, a league, usually a, just a season of high school soccer, it's about forty thousand dollars to, you know, run a field. You can't, you can't, you know, have AYSO pay something like, more portion of that. So we have to be reasonable with our community, um, you know, and basically consider that.
Yeah, and I think these are another question that I can, are, are we have opportunities, you know, and we developing a policy or anything about opportunities that might, you know, I need to get a work, you know, involve the hardship.
Yeah, and there's always, everything leaves an option open, you know, there, I mean, there's no ironclad anything, even in this draft form. And, and looking at the other eight districts that I look for in their fee structures, they all had some kind of way out, if you will. And, and that's why you have the classification of nonprofit, um, you know, which is like twenty-five percent of the fee or, or it's just a lot less fee than a for-profit. Out of district, it's going to cost a lot more than a nonprofit out of district or in district. And like, if it's a tax-based entity like the fire department, police department, parks and rec, it's almost no fee unless there's a staffing cost, because, of course, that's, that's always reasonable. So there is about five different stages of fees to try to keep it as fair as possible. So, consider all those. Yes, we are moving and we're almost in the twenty-first century. So it will be there soon. Um, and I think it will be a big hit, but just like anything new, as we know, it's going to be a little bit of disrupt, all that's not the way we've always done it, we understand it. Anything new is a little difficult, so we will roll it out slow to try to ease the, um, burden of change as much as possible. Yeah, it's almost like that new Excel sheet. Once you, after you learn, it's like, oh, this is the easiest thing in the world, so.
I think if they have, uh, a complicated process and a lot of stakeholders involved, so.
Yes. It was actually a lot more than I thought. When, uh, when Randy first of all, appeared me for that and stuff. But, but thank you, Mr. Anderson.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Uh, did you have a report? Okay, so before I give my report, I would like us to, uh, take action on next year's calendar. So we have the calendar committee meet and we have the recommended, um, calendar for you to be approved for next year and we follow the similar pattern to what we did this year, making sure that our, uh, second trimester is the longest, just in case we encounter weather, which we encountered an abundance of weather this year, which, um, moved us even beyond what, what we had, uh, tried to build in there. So, hopefully we won't have that next year and we'll be able to have, uh, uh, the calendar go without having to be adjusted. Any questions or comments?
I, I'm going to make one comment and I, I'm just curious to know the possibility, um, and why we though a full day on the last week's school is often a little difficult. Would you, would you consider a discussion on, you can like, early release, late start, the evening, or even on the stop for Friday? So that the last day of school is a half-day, personal, daily day. I'm just, I, I guess I'd like to, I wonder what the administration and the people might think about that school. I, I just often hear, you know, the big things that the administration, this year, they were thinking that, that last day was double, maybe a half-day.
Um, you know, we, we went over this with our, you know, like I said, we went over this with the committee and, um, you know, we, this is, this is what came out of the committee work. Um, I'm, I'd hate to see us lose any of our, um, late start, early release time, because we, we do really, you know, we, and especially like this year, we do really need that work to be done by the, the teachers and, and so there's a, you know, that collaboration that we have with the teachers, especially.
Well, I'm just saying that last week, that, that means, so instead of Friday being a full day, have the Wednesday be a full day and then Friday be a half-day. Is that what you're saying? So that last week is four.
So it would still be an early release.
So still having an early release, like start that happened on Friday to tell the June versus the tenth. Again, just a, a comment more on that last week, because, well, kids are checking out the teachers and maybe it, it should go to the administration. It's more, I think, just a comment, I wonder the impact of this working that, you know, the early days on Friday, there's, there's.
I guess my only concern with the chronic absenteeism problem that we have is, is that shortening the, the last day on a Friday is that they won't show up. So, um, or will have fewer show up. I don't know.
So, in my experience, that, that, in, in, the last one, the last day of school, it'd be a full day, but most elementary schools, uh, and, and the last half day is, uh, is really wide, uh, activity. So they're sort of, all schools are organized, things that are fun. It's a full day, but there wasn't anyone, or, or, is that a possibility?
I would turn that back to the elem, our elementary principals that are here. Is, is that, I mean, you know, that's. Right, it's easier to do at AdPac. What, what you see is the flexibility is in the, the second. What you see is the flexibility is in the, the second trimester because that's usually when you have the winter weather. And so if you'll notice, you know, your, your first trimester is fifty-six to fifty-seven days. Second trimester is sixty-one days, and the third trimester is fifty-eight. What happened to us this year, hopefully, you know, it was kind of like a few years ago when we had the, the wildfire event, and I thought, well, that's, you know, never going to happen again. And the very next year, we had another wildfire event. I don't, I'm, I'm hoping this is not going to be a pattern, but we do. So there's where our, our flexibility goes as, as far as, as to, you know, get it. But when you go to losing eight full days of instruction, this year in particular, we, again, try, you, you, when we looked at it and shifting it, we needed to get enough time, especially at the secondary level, for those students to, to get those credits. And you have to be careful where you shift the trimester to. This year, we shifted it, as you know, this was the, the last day for students, and, and then it's a, a grading day tomorrow for teachers, which makes a lot of sense because you want, you, you want to be able to start a trimester. Our other option was to try to start a trimester like on a Monday or Tuesday, if we, if we didn't want to add days at the end. So trying to get enough instructional time into the, the, back into the trimester. Hopefully, most years, you, you don't even need that much flexibility, but, but we do have the flexibility there. The other, and Kurt, you can help me with this because we, we talked about that in terms of the high school. You get below a certain amount of days in a trimester, and, and, and I, and I think, if I remember right, we talked about at one point when we were trying to adjust the calendar, it was going to be like fifty-five at the end, and you said, you know, now we're, yeah.
Yeah, but it's about fifty-six days if that, if that was for, rather, we get our credits when we, uh, sixty-five hours, you know, a card in the unit. It's not, it used to be in, in statute, it's not anymore. But that's still the, kind of the standard, you know, you need, you need to have. And you're really want to work on that. So that's quite a fifty-six number is there for, for the minimum, you know, number that we have in trimester, so. That was a concern, sorry, that was a concern, just try to, when we drop, you know, that, uh, for all this year, so.
And so again, when we adjusted it this year, we were really looking at, okay, we were thinking in terms of, again, we, we want kids to be at school, and the chronic absenteeism piece is, is a problem for our district. So trying to get this weekend, four days before spring break, and then start a new trimester right after the spring break. And then again, getting a full weekend but not going into a Monday or Tuesday. Oftentimes, when you do a Monday or Tuesday end to a school year, you, you lose kids before. I mean, parents just say, you know, that's, that's it. So now you've, you've lost that opportunity. So that, those are the kinds of things we think about, try to, put together.
So Julie, I, I guess that would be a concern, but our first trimester being very tight. And there's always, it shows now, the first trimester.
The only thing that we've had in first trimester has been a smoke, smoke event. Couple of years ago, we had, uh, poor quality, yeah.
Well, it goes to remember, and I know we have snow and rain, but we're hearing it all, so we have to.
Yeah, you, you could, you could.
Now that, now that you say that, wait till next year. We did have, we did have some really cold, we did have some really cold days in, in December.
Just have a one thing to add. If you, if you want to try, your first trimester, because spring trimester, you have, you know, there's no weather against spring, you have, yeah, pulls kids off. So that's just the reality, you have all grade levels, up to eighth grade and then off.
Yes.
And then on paper?
Okay, so a couple of other things I wanted to bring up, and one of them was mentioned by our, our student from the high school. I had the privilege to go down to Salem on the nineteenth and observe Nathan and a couple of our juniors, Riley and Carly were down there with him. And then there were other students there from different parts of the state, mainly southern Oregon. But we, there was a, a young man from Bend area that kind of joined in with our group. And Nathan is absolutely right, he, he made me very, very proud. And, and all of them did, they were just amazing, they, they stayed on message. They basically went to the different legislators and, and, and shared their story from a, a student perspective. And I, I was very proud of them for not, you know, when a couple of the representatives said, "Well, how are we going to pay for it?" And they said, "Well, we really leave that up to you as the legislators. What we're here to do is, is to share with you our story and to tell you, this is, this is the need that we, that we see." So they did an amazing job. And then I just want to give a shout out to our, our representative, Bonham, because he took them down onto the floor, because they, they weren't, didn't have anything going on at the time. And, and so the kids were introduced to, you know, he, he showed them where he sits, and, and he gave them a, a quick lesson in parliamentary procedure as far as what he's required to do and what, you know, what goes on in there before a vote. And then each of them also got to, to go up to the speaker stand. The only thing he cautioned them on was not to bring the gavel down too heavy or he'd have problems. But they, so they, they, that was an amazing opportunity for them. And interestingly enough, at least one of them had never been to our Capitol before, and so it was a huge wonderful experience. I'm just very proud of the students, and they were filmed all day. And I, you know, quite honestly, they were so poised for having a film crew there in their face, constantly and pulling them off to the side and talking to them. And they still just, just kept going, so it, it was amazing day, so, good thing. The other thing I wanted to, to share and just really reiterate, although it's on our website and you already are aware of it, we are moving ahead with conducting our, beginning to conduct our long-range facilities plan. We had some really positive news as of the fourteenth. North Wasko has been awarded both a technical assistance program grant, a TAP grant, of twenty thousand dollars and a long-range facilities planning grant of twenty-five thousand dollars from the state of Oregon to move forward with this technical assistance program. And we have had Richard Higgins, who is certified to conduct the assessment. He's, he's completed that, he's coming here on Tuesday, April sixteenth. It's kind of the kickoff night at the senior center where we're going to be listening to that, that first part and really taking input from our community on, on moving forward. I've asked our facilities director, Dawn, to be prepared. There are tools that have come from the state, a matrix, for example, when Richard was certified on this. It's, it's a very lockstep assessment that they do. And, and the state puts them through a full, a full day of going through this, and, and they want to have what we refer to in, in, in-house as, as inter-rater reliability, so that no matter where you're doing this in the state, who's, whoever's conducting it comes up with similar kinds of ratings for these buildings because this is what the state is asking for in terms of having a database for what's going on throughout the state of Oregon. So we want to make sure that, that we're true to that. And with Richard being certified in that, and, and the folks that he brought in to help with that, all doing the same process and using the same tool, I feel very comfortable with that. And then again, our, our community, hopefully we'll have some experts from our, our community that would like to step forward and, and take a look at some of our facilities using this along with, you know, just other people that are interested in it. And we'll go through each of, of the facilities over time. But we need to start planning for this process, which the recommended timeline for this is twenty-four to thirty months. So I, I want you to know that upfront. And it includes the, the beginning, which is the facility's condition assessment. We're going to be looking at population projections for Portland State. Collaboration with local government is incredibly important, community involvement is important. Historical building information is really important. And Richard sent me an, an email that also said that even though some of these not, might not be on the register in the state of Oregon, we still have to take a look at them. And we know for sure, for example, the high school and Colonel Wright, but also just, um, dry hollow falls into it. And, and so, so we're going to have to look through that, through that lens as well, which is a good thing to do. We are going to look through the lens of educational adequacy standards. And then just realize that as we're moving forward with this, we're looking at a ten-year proposed plan that's going to be updated as, as folks move along. So what updates it is changes in population projections, changes in other entities that, that are, are doing, you know, their updates on, on their plans over time. So you, we're going to be revisiting this and, and seeing what's, what's going on going forward, but this will be, this will be for the long run. So any questions?
In, in terms of accessibility to that process?
As far as accessibility, so part of it, so part of it is the, the sixteenth is taking input on, on what would help people be able to access and understand. We're going to livestream it, so I think that will help because, you know, not everybody can make meetings all the time. And, and we're going to take calls so that people can access, you know, to be able to participate without necessarily having to be present. But we'll also, as we move forward through the different phases, we'll take a look at as we're going to the buildings. Obviously, we can't, you know, we can't necessarily have everyone see every building, but we'll do everything we can to make sure that they, that, that the process we go through is transparent and the community has input at every step of the way. For the sixteenth, it's the senior center? Yes, and it's, starts at six o'clock, six to eight P.M. We will have a number for them to be able to call in, and it'll be livestreamed. Okay. Yes, I think that's a great idea. So I, I hadn't heard that part, but that's, if you discuss that, that's a good idea. So they have some questions, yes, absolutely. Good. Well, we'll thank Mr. Anderson for, for getting those in. And again, a hundred and twenty-two grants were given throughout the state. Not everyone, not everyone received a grant, obviously, that applied for it. And we're extremely fortunate to get both, so.
No, that's a different one.
Oh, the, the, yeah, the other grant, just while we're talking about facilities, we, we did get, it's the assessment piece for the seismic, right?
Yes, we got a, last, you know.
And this is thanks to Dawn.
Last, I believe it was October, we were awarded the seismic assessment grant for about twenty-five thousand dollars. And we got that in to prepare to hopefully get a, well, it could be up to two-point-six million dollar seismic rehab grant. But you really need the assessment first because there, there's a lot of background caveats to it. So we, so we're finishing up the work on the assessment grant. Actually, we're finishing up in, in April, we'll finish up everything. And then, you know, actually in April, we should hear if we were, if we are awarded the seismic rehab grant. Like I said, it could be up to two-point-six million dollars. It depends on how much work we actually need to have done. If we need to have in one facility two-point-four million, that's what we'll get, is two-point-four million. No, 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 we can use others. But it, but we really looked at three specific locations based on the seismic ratings of the buildings. First gymnasium was, was one, you know, the old, old Colonel Wright building was, was one of the others.
The seismic piece?
Yes.
Yeah, once we get it back, like I said, it'll be finished April, I believe it's eleventh.
It could be possible.
So, yeah, it, it all depends on how soon they, they get the report to us. And obviously, I got to go through it, and I am not the engineer, so I will talk the best I can to it. But, but it was an ISO, hopefully we get this next month. That would be a nice.
The normal financial statements are there. I don't have much comment, actually, I prepared it quite some time ago, and I did my years in trying to keep the budget. The, the attendance one is kind of unusual in that the attendance is exactly the same at the, for the month of February as it is for the month of March, which is actually the first of February to the first of March. But as I told superintendent, that's because we've never had ten consecutive school days during the month of February where we had to drop in the building. So I think, I, I would report to the board, the state has, there's no certainty about the level of state funding yet. The governor's recommended budget is a hundred million dollars higher than the co-chair's recommended budget. And so because they're obligated to do it, the, the O D E is a run full estimate. So my goal during spring break is to get the budget to fit into one of them. I, I don't think it's going to be, I, I don't believe it's going to be the co-chair's budget. It's going to be, maybe it's going to be between, maybe it'll get to the, to the governor's budget. Candy has perhaps more input on that than, than I do.
Well, my, my concern about the co-chair's budget is, is that's a, that's a budget for a tremendous number of districts in the state. And, and I'm certainly hopeful that, that they go with at least the, the governor's budget. It's going to depend on what the legislature is able to do around coming up with the revenue package and a very high probability of whatever they come up with will go to the voters. So, so that's a, you know, it's a delicate balance that, that has to happen. They, they need some cost containment, and, and they need some sort of a revenue stream. So they're looking at things, but, yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned that the co-chair's budget came in or it did, was that, that's problematic.
And parallel track to that, there's obviously conversation on doing more than that. You know, fully funding the measure ninety-eight, which didn't happen the last go-round, as well as adding more money and doing it in a school improvement type fund rather than a state school fund. So I'm trying to figure out how to address that. I, I think we'll probably include it as a liftable sort of thing, if it happens, or it's going to get referred to the voters too. So the timing is so bad that even if it were approved, it's going to be November, December-ish. So whether you could really roll something out and, and hire the personnel at that time of year. But I haven't, I haven't digested all that yet. The, you know, the state of the state is pretty good, the, the economic forecast is good. Makes the kicker be higher. Personal income tax kicker is going to be in the range in the seven-hundred-million-dollar range, which at some level seems sort of silly to send it back. They have to, it's, it's in the constitution. But send it back and then try to figure out a way to get it back again to, to balance the budget. If they had it in their pocket and they, anyway, does not editorialize it, so.
I think the curse piece is, is that, again, you know, that, that hit, and then ongoing healthcare. I think the FERs case is, again, you know, that that hit, and then ongoing healthcare cost increases are just really, I know that the state's trying hard to find cost containment around that, but there's, there aren't a lot of options that they can do. So, but there are some that are available, that I feel that I'm certainly hopeful they will look at and see if they can't make less of a dip on the districts, because, quite frankly, what is...
Well, and, you know, an absolute, and they're, and they should take credit for absolutely, in absolute dollars, they're going to add $1.4 million to our allocation of the state's school fund.
Under the co-chairs?
No, under the governor's.
Under the governor's, okay.
But our, I'm projecting that our FERs cost will go up without any salary increases. Our FERs cost will be $915,000 more next year than it is this year. So that doesn't leave much to do to other roll-up costs. Health insurance is not going to get cheaper. Nothing we buy is going to get cheaper. So it's a significant challenge to get this thing to work. Our share of $100 million, and I'm, if you split it evenly, because they're going to split it 49-51, but if they split it evenly, our share would be about a quarter of a million dollars. So now we're down to $1.1 million, and we're going to spend $900 of it on FERs, it's not going to fit. We're in a, and I should point out to the board, too, this is a little, we're in a different enrollment situation than we've been in the past. You know, it was, we never had big gains, but it was predictably a few kids more every time. It's a whole different battle when you're going to be down, you know, 40 kids is $400,000. And so it's a different, it's a whole different process in a declining enrollment situation. We had an unusually small kindergarten class this year, so that, there will be a down, there's a valley for the next 12 years after that, you know, the, I don't, unless a whole bunch of them move in here in the fourth grade, and they get up to the normal class size, there's a dip. And when we're sitting here, when the budget is due before the year is over for next year, we've made an estimate, and we think historically kindergartens will be, but we don't really know until school starts how big the kindergarten is going to be. So it's a, it's a challenging exercise. I think that's all I have, and I'm sure.
Actually, I don't want to say travel, it's going to be fun. Mary Jo Comerford is here to talk. I'll talk a little bit about big picture stuff, and then stand there, come up if you'd like. I've got a chair for you, I'll stand. Yeah, if you need anything to brighten your day after you hear the stories about the FERs rate going up, just talk to Mary Jo about some of the success stories of some of the kids that have come through, you know, our Advanced Placement Program. Well, you told me the other day about the gal that's in the Gonzaga band, you know, Final Four, you know, and so we've got one of our graduates that's up there and traveling now. So if you're not familiar with Advanced Placement, it stands for, it's part of the College Board, it's a rigorous curriculum and course that kids go through, and then they, at the end of their, it's mostly sophomores through, we have some freshmen in program, it's mostly sophomores through juniors or seniors that do it. They take an exam at the end of the year, and if they get a three-year hire, most colleges award college credit for that. And from my point of view, it's not such so much that we're in the business of giving them free college, it's we're preparing them for college. And so if you take an Advanced Placement class, the feedback that we get is that college is much easier than that class that we took. So, anyway, Colby Ton and Mary Jo Comerford are going to go again to be, or asking to go again to be AP readers, and I'll let you kind of fill them in a little bit about that.
I just want to give you why I'm in front of the board, just a little snapshot. So today was the day that we had to order the AP exams, and we've ordered well over 200 exams for students to take in AP Econ, Bio, Literature, European History, World History, Government and Politics, Calculus, Art and Spanish. Oh, we have eight teachers on our staff teaching AP, and we have a well-represented body in terms of equity, that we're seeing a variety of social economic strata and diversity in our AP program. The other really, I think, you know, the piece of pride is the network of programs we're putting together, because AP supports our Avid program, or Avid supports our AP program. We're also touching base with TAG at the high school level. We have a really strong ASPIRE program to help kids with their college application process. And as you pay attention to the college admissions scandals of the week, you know, our kids are just insulted at just the thought of that. But we off, a kid in the Dells can take rigorous college-level classes and have a mentor to prepare them for college the whole way through. So it's really wonderful to see the network. It also networks with our local scholarship programs, our Juntos program, our college visits. I mean, we really have a strong environment at the high school, where kids know that this is what they can do and they have access to. We also have very open doors. All we're really asking for is effort, you know, if the kid's willing to try, we do not turn them down. And I think there's a tremendous amount of pride in a kid to take an AP class. At the end of every book that we read in English literature, a Socratic seminar, I always have the question, you know, is this an appropriate book? It's hard reading, there's difficult topics, and the kids will be like, but this is an AP class, so we can handle it, because we're AP students. So I think it really does that cultural piece. The other thing I did want to, one slight change of this year is that in the last two years, we've started trying to have an AP class at the freshman level, so that kids could come right into the middle school for some reverse programs. And we've offered AP Government and Politics, and we have found that that's a bit too challenging of a class. A lot of other schools do it at the end of high school. So we're changing that next year to AP Human Geography, which many schools do do at a freshman level. So a freshman can walk in and have a high-level math, an AP Social Studies, and an English, honors English, so that that, right off the bat, you know, and we also want to work more with the middle school, so we can see who those kids are and how we can get them set. And Avid is just a wonderful program. So I think there's just really a lot of pride, the kids have pride in taking it, and we have a large amount of kids taking it. And the accessibility and equity, AP exams are free for students on free and reduced lunch, and the state does subsidize to the tune of about $24 each exam to bring down the cost for everybody. But that's the exciting part. I think one danger about increasing an AP thing is you can't just say to a teacher, here, it's an AP class, go for it. We were trained in it, and even for the first few years, you're just feeling your way. And after, when it's taught for three years, you can apply to be an AP reader, and Mr. Ton and I have both been AP readers, and we've been invited back to do that. And so we're asking permission to travel. I will say, it really is going to cost the district about nothing. College Board pays our way, takes care of us, and then the snow days are helping, because usually the only cost to the district is the sub while we're gone. But given that I teach a lot of seniors, junior seniors, so my juniors can be, the sub can be the senior teachers, because there's a two-week gap between when our seniors leave, so it's going to be very little in the sub department. So we're asking permission, because we're going out of state. I read for AP History, and that's going to be in Louisville, Kentucky. And I forget where Colby is going, Utah, again?
Kansas City.
What, Kansas City? And it is that last, I unfortunately missed graduation, but it is that last week when most of my seniors are gone, so, yeah.
And I'm sorry, for the new folks, I'm Kurt Evans, the principal, not Colby Ton.
Sorry. And I'm Mary Jo Comerford, I teach AP English and History.
I want to tell you something, just some kind of feedback, because I have the opportunity to meet senior students, both AP students and Avid students, over the last few years through the work of Colonel Wright, and have the opportunity to interview one. And I have to say, that student was as poised as any college student might for an internship. She stood beside anybody really in a job, in a job, in a new situation, and just really recommended this girl, and the programs that we do to help, you know, help these students become college and career student ready, all students. So I really appreciate it, and I'm seeing it better in the first hand.
Yeah, there's a, I think, you know, depending on the college, you know, 30 to 50% dropout rate in freshman year of college, and so, you know, there's a lot of different reasons. But remediation at college is going to be one of them, because it extends in college. So when they come in and they're just ready to go, it lowers that rate.
We're really finding that our AP kids, I mean, it's almost 99% are in college in the next year, and we bring them back, and we need to have a way to statistically really look at things, but they are successful in staying. I mean, sometimes they'll transfer to a different school, it wasn't the right fit, but they're in a college program, and they really are, they're coming back and saying they were ready, they were prepared. The other thing the AP exam gives them is a sense of final week, so that they don't go to college, and all of a sudden, finals week is a shock to them. So they really, you know, they're sitting for a three-hour exam. So they're, you know, we've had really good feedback from students about it.
Yeah, and just one more thing I'll add, just, my son's a junior this year, there we were kind of calculating how many college credits he should have, and, you know, he should have, you know, he'll have about 45 college credits by the end of his senior year. And that's not really going up to the college and taking anything, that's just teaching, using our instructors and our staff to, combination of our College Now courses, which is kind of a different program and very few classes. So, so really a year of college, you know, just by, you know, getting enough the main menu, really, so.
And this is in addition to the community college courses that are there. So we're asking permission to...
I'm not going.
It's seven days till five o'clock every day of rating and exam, seven days in a row and two double days, so we're asking permission to torture ourselves. And I just want to say, there's, you know, about Wednesday, about day three, you know, you're like, what the? But I will say, there's nothing better. I mean, it's intimidating to teach an AP test, you're looking like, are they ready? Are they ready? But what's really wonderful about being a reader is you really learn the rubric well, and the kids have confidence in you, and I think it gives our school and our district a sense that we really do have qualified teachers in it. And also, I think that we end up helping the other AP teachers, you know, kind of support each other with, how does this really work? So it's the best, you know, professional development I've ever had, and the most torturous. They put a big bowl of, first of all, I will say, it's high security because of all the College Board stuff, right? So we are, you know, guards at every door, but they've put a lot of chocolate in the middle of the table to just keep us going. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the AP program, if you have some.
to kind of go back on our policy and go back to former language, so. So the legislature, a few years ago, had allowed open enrollment, which districts could, had to decide by March of each year whether they were going to open their district to enrollment, or a portion of their district. So, for example, Hood River opened theirs limited, so they'd open schools like Cascade Locks, Parkdale, you know, where they had room. And then students could apply, parents could make the decision, and students could apply, and then they could go to that, to that school if they chose to. They had to provide their own transportation to it. And so open enrollment, again, was more a decision on the part of the district each year. That particular law sunsetted, so we're going back to just what traditional inter-district agreements that we've had in the past, which, you know, we had those anyways, even though there was this new open enrollment for a while. It's been very confusing for parents and for districts to try to navigate through that. I don't know whether the legislature will visit it again in the future, but it does look like anything's moving forward this year to do that. So we're back to more of an arrangement, school district to school district, and we have declared, I believe last meeting declared, what, 30 slots going in, 30 slots going out, to try to accommodate, as I've said before, I try to accommodate if parents really want their children to go to a different school district, and that the school district's willing to accept their children, you know, and vice versa, because I know oftentimes we will have, especially at the high school level, we'll have students that are maybe in a smaller district, or a district that doesn't have the offerings that we do at Washington College, so. That's still coming. To adopt, just for a second. J U B C. J U B C. Okay. Oh, the policy itself, okay.